I'm gonna go to part two next year.
Thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
You're welcome. How it's at high school in North Miami Beach? How it's at North Miami Beach, you're happy with it? Yes. Yeah, somehow.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the two-stage law second 2019 meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. We would like to all stand now for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the record reflects those who are present. I will now call the roll. Village Attorney Sarah Finn.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Lefredo.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. So to start out this evening, we have the pleasure of presenting a proclamation of appreciation for Miami Shores Elementary faculty member, Billy Carpenter. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the proclamation, but I know you're a great reader, so I don't need to read it out loud. It says wonderful things about your 20 years at Miami Shores Elementary and all of your lifelong teaching.
Thank you so much.
But I've been talking to a few little birds in the community, and they have mentioned to me that you really are a child whisperer, and we honor you for that, that throughout your career and wanting to continue your career for as long as you have, you show the community so much love for our children. And you might think, being over here, that we don't notice this, but we have noticed it, and we have noticed you. And we also know a few little items that weren't in the paper.
Oh.
One of which is that you were one of the lead teachers who founded the STEM program at Miami Shores Elementary, and that you've been so involved in that, and that you had a very steep learning curve in teaching rocket science to students.
Robotics.
And robotics as well. So, yes, and the launching of rockets on the field and things like this, and taking students on the Everglades trip that you did, which was three days and two nights, which we know some teachers would never do. And you did it for years, and you did it with so much aplomb, and so, and also sponsoring, all the sponsoring that you did as a teacher, all we hear about is how teachers are reaching deep into their pocket, and so that is also much appreciated, so.
Thank you. Wonderful colleagues, Julie and I used to be campers together, and of course, it was Frasier and the Johnsons, the best parents ever. We love you, and you can't be a good teacher unless you've got this kind of support. So I've had the support, and I know it's had the support of the village along the way, too. I used to bring kids over when we were doing Project Citizen, and you were always informative and supportive of us, so we appreciate, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
So thank you so much.
Congratulations. We're supposed to get our, Billy, before you get away, you know, you're a whiskey. We're supposed to get our picture taken here, and the clerk is gonna take it, and if you wanna put the proclamation down and the flowers, you know. So you can get everybody in the picture here.
Oh, everybody in the picture.
Yes, yes.
She's got the food.
Well, she's got.
One, two, three, two, just one more, one, two, three.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Next item is the presentation on the 2020 census update by Katia Saint-Fleur.
Well, since it's a smaller round, I don't think I need any type of speaking. I could speak pretty loud, I have a big mouth. Thank you guys for allowing us to come today. Oh, no. Well, I'll adjust this, it's okay. Pardon? Oh, there you go. Well, my name is Katia Saint-Fleur, and I am with the Census Bureau, and it is that time of the decade again. So we are approaching 2020, and as we approach 2020, we are talking to all of our local governments to start building out, thank you, to start building out a census plan in order to get a full count. This is a brief presentation. I'll kinda go over some of it, I won't be lengthy, so that we don't hold you guys long. So we call this the Road to 2020, focused on Florida. I'm part of the Atlanta region. The Atlanta region has, as you can see, Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, and South Carolina. That's a bit of a change, because 10 years ago, we had Alabama, Florida, and Georgia only. And just FYI, I did this 10 years ago for Miami Shores as well, so I'm a little familiar with the area, and I just bought a house here.
Oh.
Thank you. Ah, you're not behaving. It's not really behaving, you're one of my kids. Sorry, y'all. Right? All right, thank you. So local government involvement is key to census success. The efforts of local governments contributed to the census success of 2010. Local update of census addresses, which is a Luca program, which has already happened, and that is when we go around and we make sure that all of the addresses that we have on file, you have on file, so that when the questionnaires or now the postcards get mailed out, that we're sending them to all of the proper addresses, and that we're not skipping or missing anyone. Recruiting for Census workers, this is key. We like to employ people from the communities in which they live, 'cause it makes it a lot easier. If you're knocking on doors, if in our non-response follow-up, if we're knocking on doors, we want the folks knocking on the doors to look like the community that they're knocking on the doors with. It makes it a lot easier for trust, it makes it a lot easier for understanding, and there's, we can't replace cultural understanding, so. Formation of a complete count committee. I'm gonna get into that. Complete count committee is really essentially just a group of people who come together to make sure that there's a complete count. It's a little self-explanatory. There's a little detail that goes into it, but we'll get into that later. Field operations from address canvassing to non-response follow-up. So I just, okay, next. Why governments have a vested interest in the census. Political power. Census is constitutionally mandated for reapportionment of Congress. Census results are used for redistricting at national, state, and local levels. And the most important, money and the economic impact. So $400 billion a year is distributed using census numbers, $4 trillion over the decade, and $675 billion a year will be distributed for 2020. So that's $7 trillion over the decade from 2020 to 2030. And once we get this count, this is the only count that we have to use. If you guys ever have to write grants, if you ever have to say, these are how many kids we have that live in Miami Shores, you use census data. Whenever you're trying to get federal dollars for anything, census data is the only thing that's used. They don't use estimates, they don't use anything else. So we have to get the count right. All right, so this does mandate county, 'cause you have the wrong one, but Miami Dade County was at a 72% response rate. And response rate is just essentially how many people we mailed out questionnaires to or census forms to, and they mailed it back. So in Miami Dade County, we had a response rate of 72. Miami Shores had a response rate of 77. The census for Florida was 74. So you guys did better than the state and the county. We wanna get that number up some more. So, next slide. In 2010, we talked about reapportionment. Because of the numbers that we had and the shift in, the shift in population in the country, Florida was able to gain two seats. We're not making any speculations on how many seats we're gonna get this time, but know that as the population shifts, representation shifts. We are making projections. So Miami, Florida is projected, that was supposed to be taken out, I'm sorry, you guys. Florida is projected to gain one seat, one or two seats, as you can see the light green, just based on what people are guessing where the populations have grown in the past 10 years. And in the seats where, I'll go, where the, you say words. The bread? These states, like Alabama, just to let you guys know how important this is to folks. Alabama understands that they are losing people. They have literally put $3 million in their census outreach to make sure that every person in Alabama gets counted. So this is something that states are putting money into, counties are putting money into, and local governments are putting money into, and it is an invest, you get a return on that investment. 2020 census is gonna be a little bit different, and by a little bit, I mean a lot of it. So we're making it easier than ever for people to respond to the census. In previous censuses, the primary method of response to the census was to receive a questionnaire in the mail, complete it, and mail it back. However, for 2020, the internet is the primary method for households to respond, meaning that folks will get a postcard telling them that it is time to do the census, and then you will have the opportunity to go online and do it yourself. Now, we've also, we've thought about the hiccups. There's a 1-800 number where someone can call if they would like a form, and the form will be mailed to you, and when you call the 1-800 number, there's gonna be a plethora of languages that people speak that'll be able to walk you through it. So we'll have Spanish speakers, Portuguese speakers, Haitian Creole speakers, so that's super great. And the reason we have Haitian Creole speakers this time around is because we did such a good job last time around, counting the folks in Miami Dade County and seeing where we have pockets of these languages, and now we serve them properly. Optimizing self-response for 2020. Secondary ways of responding to the census, again, the toll-free number, the traditional questionnaire, so you can call and get it mailed to you, and non-response follow-up. We try to limit non-response follow-up as much as possible. Non-response follow-up is when someone actually does come knocking on your door. So I like to tell people, if you do not want folks to knock on your door, because the Constitution says we have to get this count, so it will happen. If they don't mail it, if they don't call in, if we don't know that we have your count, someone will come to get that count, so as a way to avoid being bothered, or if you don't want folks coming to your house, we really, really push that we get this response rate up as high as possible. It is important to note that the Census Bureau, A, never, ever ask for your full social security number. Never ask for money or donation. We never send requests on behalf of a political party, and we never request PIN codes, passwords, or similar access information for credit cards, banks, or other financial accounts. As it starts to roll, some of you guys that are here, council members, if at any point someone says any of these things happened, it wasn't the Census Bureau. Privacy and confidentiality. I'm gonna read this verbatim, because it's really, really important, especially in Florida, and we have a peculiar climate, so we want people to know that the census is private and it is confidential. Under Title 13 of the U.S. Code, all Census Bureau employees swear a lifetime oath to protect responded data. It is a felony for any Census Bureau employee to disclose any confidential census information during or after employment, and the penalty for wrongful disclosure is up to five years in imprisonment and/or a fine of $250,000. We protect information by taking precautions in how we collect, analyze, and disseminate information. The Census Bureau has strong programs to protect information as they collect, process, and store it in secure IT systems. The Census Bureau encrypts information, limits access, and actively monitors systems to make sure that information stays secure. I'd like to add to this, that the Census Bureau does not share personal identifying information, meaning we don't share your name, we do not share things that can tell someone who you are. We share age, we share numbers, we share reported income, we share whatever you self-describe as your nationality or your race. We do not give information to anyone that would say that Katia Saint-Fleur lives at 90 something, 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 Miami Shores. Impediments to a successful enumeration. After using big words, but impediments to a successful count. Some hard-to-count indicators. Persons at or below poverty. Persons receiving public assistance, disability, or social security. Concentrations of minority groups, immigrants, linguistically isolated communities, and migrant workers. Areas with high concentrations of low education attainment, no high school diploma, 5% or more who speak a language other than English at home. This one is key, because in Miami Dade County, 60% of the people in Miami Dade County speak a language other than English at home. So that alone makes the entire Miami Dade County a hard-to-count county, and single parents. Low response scores. This is just a map, and I will share with the clerk a way to go in and look. We have a way that we can go in and show you where your areas are that had the lowest response rates. Our outreach strategy, this is where we're gonna talk about the complete count committee. And it can look, we have a template, but should the village decide to do a complete count committee, which we highly recommend, it can look like whatever you guys deem fits the village of Miami Shores. A CCC is a group of trusted voices in the community appointed by the highest elected officials to develop activities to raise census awareness among community households and urging them to complete the census accurately. It's an opportunity to tailor the census outreach and messaging to the most effectively influenced communities throughout your country. So it isn't necess, county, it isn't necessarily that you have to appoint folks. People can volunteer. People can volunteer, people can say, you know what, I think this is really important, I wanna get involved. A complete count committee should reflect all segments of the community, government, business, education, faith-based, community-based organizations, recruitment, workforce development agencies, and other unique populations. I'd like to tell people at this point that, especially since we just honored a wonderful teacher, that children are the most undercounted in the country. So making sure that we have educational folks in there, making sure that we have daycare centers involved, so that parents can be educated on why it's important to count their kids, is extremely important. We know that we're underfunded, and we're underfunded, because we don't know how many kids are really there. They can plan for 10,000 kids, and they end up with 15,000, and that's how we have overcrowded classrooms. A CCC, a group of community leaders in extremely and extreme hard-to-numerate rural and urban communities that collaborate for the purpose of creating a census awareness campaign targeted to specific census tracts or concentrated populations that raise census awareness within groups and encourage them to participate in the census. So the village, if they wanted to, can come up with their own slogan. You could say, Miami Shores counts, we want you to count in Miami Shores. You can get creative with it, but it's your message that you believe will speak to us, 'cause I live here now, so. This is a quick roadmap. Right now, what we're doing is, we've already established, and we're still establishing, where to count, right? That is when we do the address canvassing. Motivate people to respond, that's what we're doing right now. We're motivating, we're educating. Once January restarts, we get into more motivation, because the postcards come out in March. So April 1st, 2020 is census day. And apply online. Again, I can stress to you, I'll bring some flyers, I'll send you some PDF, I think I did, where we can try to get as many people involved, if they wanna part-time job. I know I've encountered a lot of folks that are retired, so maybe they wanna have something to do, and just somebody who wants something on the side, they're pretty good-paying jobs, so we, I encourage everyone who knows of anyone, please share this information. We would like to hire within the village to count the village. And I think that is, that is it. So I am open to any questions.
The, the actual count, you pick a day, and that's April 1st, that's the day that the count is essentially effective?
It's like a reference date. April 1st is a reference date. If you're doing your census, you say, where are you gonna be April 1st, 2020, and that's where you report that you live. That becomes a big deal for folks who may live somewhere 50/50.
How long does the whole process of counting go, like in Miami Shores? How long will it take from start to finish?
It depends on how quickly we're getting responses. That's, that's, I can't quite gauge that. I know that it starts around March, you get the postcard, you have April 1st as census day, and I would, I'd estimate through the end of April, and then we start knocking on doors.
So then there's a follow-up in May?
There's a follow-up that starts somewhere around, don't quote me on this, because it changes with the percentage of responses, but if, there's a follow-up that probably starts somewhere around the end of April.
Do you have a large budget for Miami Dade County for putting the word out?
Well, this is where it gets very creative. We do not put together a budget for this. Miami Dade County puts together a budget, and each individual local government puts together their own budget to invest in their outreach, so that they can get a good count. But the Census Bureau will have messaging on commercials, you'll see stuff on a national level, but we don't go grassroots. Our grassroots is building partnerships, so we build partnerships, we have, there are a ton of people who do what I'm doing throughout the state, and we go and we build partnerships, and we get other people educated, and we get other people to motivate. You guys were such a great bunch.
You gave a great presentation.
Aw, thank you. I feel welcome, dead calm man. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is public comments. If anyone would like to speak and approach the lectern, you have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record.
Public comment?
Does one have to go to the podium?
Yes.
Alejandra Johnson-Thomas, 136 Northeast, 101st Street. First, I wanna thank the council, especially Ms. Alice Birch, for championing the award for Ms. Carpenter, and, and I would like to thank the council for their support of Miami Shores Elementary and the village. And ultimately, we would just wanna thank Ms. Carpenter for all her years of wonderful service to our children.
Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Item 6A, approval of the June 18th, 2019 Village Council meeting minutes.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion on the second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, if it's the pleasure of the council, would you like to move to 8A? Councilman Melz may be joining us via teleconference, probably around 7:00 PM, but to allow him sufficient time, if we can move maybe to 8A, if it's the pleasure of the council.
Is that okay with you gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. Item 8A, award of request for proposal 2019-04-02 professional services plan for design bill replacement, interactive place structure at the Miami Shores Aquatics Center to Zach Tanner, Inc., ZTI, and authorizing the village manager to execute all related documents. Staff on the site, I'm the recreation director and the village manager.
Ms. Vice Mayor, council. As the clerk indicated, we've gone out to bid. First of all, let me, let me back up and say that our, our new aquatics facility is now 20 years old. It's hard to believe, it seemed like yesterday that we put that in here. The, the play feature in the, in the smaller pool has reached its life expectancy. As a matter of fact, this year, the pool is opened, however, the, the slide feature has been closed, because it was deemed unsafe by structural engineers. So we went out to bid, we received two bids back to replace the unit, we received one bid from Recreation Design and Construction, RDC, and in the amount of $941,915, and we received a second bid from Zach Tanner Industries, ZTI, in the total amount of $1,803,141. We set up a committee, we, we looked at, at the various submittals that were, that were presented, and I know it's hard for you all to see, but essentially, ZTI is giving us an, a absolutely brand-new, state-of-the-art facility with everything new. All-new piping underground, which was, which was in the bid specs, and the, the first bidder that I mentioned did not include that in their price. So we're getting an entire new facility, is what the, the employee committee that studied the issue recommended, they interviewed both companies, and they came back and recommended that we do ZTI and do a hall, an entire new facility. It even includes the new coping of the tile around it, new tub, all-new pipes underneath, and as you can see, we're, we're going with a different theme. We're going to rebrand it to a more of a jungle-type of theme. Right now, we're, for 20 years, it's been Shipwreck Cove. We have a lot of new, young families that moved into our community, and so we wanna rebrand the facility and get, you know, hopefully more people over there by, by marketing a new brand. And again, as I said, it's, it's all brand-new, the tub, the mar site, the piping underneath, the tiles, and everything, and it's a complete turnkey. This is a design-build, RFP, which means there are no extras. What Mr. Tanner built, or bid, is what is going to be built without any extras. He's here tonight, in case anybody has any, any questions. Had his knee replaced a little while ago, so he's, he's struggling a little bit, but he's, he's attended all the meetings, and we have vetted out his references, and as I said in my memo to the council, we had a money leftover, not money leftover, but we had money that was set aside as required by a bank loan that we had for 10 years when we did our motor pool and our Northeast 2nd Avenue renovation. That loan has been paid off, so that money is available for this project, and as I indicated, we would need to do a million-dollar loan over a 10-year period. The annual payment is approximately $115,000 a year for 10-year period. But for that, we get this beautiful, brand-new facility. It will last another 20 years, and it'll be something that the community can be proud of, and we can move on from there. Brand-new.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a few questions of the contractor.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you for coming down, sir.
Certainly.
I did speak to the village manager about this, but I thought that since you're here, and we have some of the public here, and we're on the record, I understand that you've come highly recommended by certain other municipalities. Could you give us just four or five of the ones that you've done pools for?
Oh, boy. Hialeah.
Was that Mylander Park?
We did Mylander Park, Bucky Dent Park, Sasso Park.
That's in North Miami.
Yes. Just recently finished Pembroke Pines, with the YMCA there. We've done North County Park in Palm Beach, Sasso, no, not Sasso, Coconut Cove, Brook Park in Boca Raton, Orlando, St. Lucia, Jupiter, Town of Jupiter.
And you're based in Palm Beach County?
Fort Lauderdale.
Fort Lauderdale. Okay. I have a, and I'm not saying to you, I have a problem with contractors that, are you all right?
Yeah. Sorry.
I have a problem with contractors that come in and bid a job and then bring in change orders. My understanding is there will be no change orders?
Zero change orders.
Okay. All right. And how long has your company been in business doing this?
Well, I've been doing this since I've been 15, I'm 61. ZTI has been in business six years. My previous company has been in business 25. My partner got spinal stenosis and ended up dying.
So 31 years.
Yeah.
Okay. I have nothing for them.
Mr. Tanner, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I understand that you know that what we had in the circumstance of our pool was a spalling problem and some difficulty with the way it was constructed, that it has, I guess my question turns to life expectancy, and I'm wondering what you're projecting that to be.
I believe that Mr. Benton was correct, that it's a 20-year life expectancy. I mean, we've specified to use whitewater as the manufacturer of the picture you saw, they're largest in the world. They have many out there that are over 20 years, 25, 30. The ones that we've done, the only ones that actually failed were New Bronsveld, which is what you have, structures that didn't have stainless steel under the water, structures that made their, like their lions and tigers and bears out of galvanized steel, things like that, actually are, theirs are made out of structural foam. actually, theirs are made out of structural foam. And then, they're coated with a material called polyurea, which is, can be made in any color, in any... But the strength of polyurea is a product that you could seriously drive, you could spray it out of the machine, and it cures to acceptable vehicular traffic in 15 seconds. This is a product that's only been out for about 20 years, 25 years. And it's pretty much indestructible. There are going to be issues down the road with areas that will eventually start to fall, fade in color and things like that, which is going to be, you know, something in the eight-to-10-year range that may require a painting job or something like that. But the plumbing that we do is all going to be underground. It's all going to be PVC. So, there's like nothing going to happen to that. Plus, it's going to be encased in a foot of concrete. We, how we're getting at all the plumbing was we're basically removing the whole floor of the structure totally out. Rather than us cutting channels and saving your existing pipe or testing your existing pipe and then put this monstrosity in the position it needs to be while watching after these channels that we would cut to redo the plumbing or check the plumbing is ludicrous. So, we just figured, take the whole thing out, put everything back new. While we're re-quing the floor, we would then do the structural work that we need to do to have the footers to support this monstrosity. And that's all going to be engineered by a structural and hydraulic engineer, which we have onboard for the project, who's done equally as much as I have.
So, the large lap pool that we have nearby, have you had experience with that kind of configuration where you're trying to protect something that is pre-existing from the construction?
Yeah, many times, we've had to do 50-meter swimming pools, and there's, say, a dive pool beside it, and it's still in operation. You know, we would build a structure, a wooden structure, paint it for you, put in, pardon the disturbance, whatever you want us to put, we put and painted up, so it's not just a bunch of boards hanging there. You know, and then lock it up at night and only have keys by our guys and stuff like that. But yeah, in terms of the traffic flow and stuff like that, you just kind of tell us what you want roped off so you don't affect your normal pedestrian traffic into the 50-meter situation. That's what we would do. I mean, we're not talking about putting lounge chairs up with some cones. You know, we would wall it off. I mean, if a kid wants to get over a wall, he's going to get over the wall. But our responsibility is to make it so that they have to, you know, get a ladder or something or a machine to get over and get in there. I mean, if we do that and something like that would happen, we've met our due diligence. The city has met their due diligence. And at that point, I think you get an attorney involved. He'd say, "We've done everything possible to keep it from, you know, from the public safely."
So, my last question is about the length of time that it's going to take for this, and I'm...
You're requesting that the job be done by May 3rd. I told you in our proposal, we'd done April 3rd. Quite frankly, the beauty of this job for us was that it's not a nine-month project. It's more of, if we've been on there with all of our guys at one time, we could probably knock this thing out pretty much, pretty easily in three months. Our problem's going to be the permitting process, an engineering process. And the engineering process, we feel, is going to take maybe three weeks. From that point forward, this is from the time of award. From that point forward, we then are, you know, in the hands of hurt of people. And, you know, customarily, they come out in 30 days, 45 days. I'm hearing that Miami Shores is not that easy. But even if they take three, three months, for example, and it takes, say, double the time for engineering, putting it at, say, a month and a half, that's four and a half months. This is, say, you would have the, whenever you award, say, it's August 1st. That's August, September, October, November, December, that's four months. That would leave us four months to do it and be done one month ahead of time. Getting back to my original thing, as a contractor, most of the time, people say, "Okay, here's this job. It's a three-month job, you have 35 days to do it." You know, "Can you do it?" Well, the answer would be no. But we can try. And if, you know, you allow us to work 24 hours a day, we can make it happen, things like that. But our timeframe here is very lenient, to say the least. We, I added a month because it's, for us, this is not that difficult. I mean, this is an erector set. This is a gigantic erector set. The work's going to be the demolition and the stealing and the reconcreting and approvals by the various municipalities that come in and inspectors that pass certain things. They've been good. The problem is getting the permit. Once you get the permit, the guys that come normally are very good. I don't care what city you work for. We haven't had too many. I have done a few here, and I knew the second one was not that good in terms of the way it went. But it was more so misunderstandings between what we are, it's on the blueprint drawing, and what they envisioned, you know, we were supposed to do. And we say, "You approved this plan, this is what we're doing." And I mean, if you, where did you come up with this new thing? And half the time, we have to go back to their boss, which takes two or three, four days. Then they go, "You know, inspector, you're wrong, you can do this and that." But if it happens three times, that's a month.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Seraphin?
Do you need any county permits?
I'm going to need Miami Shores, that's it.
You'll be okay.
The Health Department is a different. Derm, we're not going to need.
Oh, you don't need derm?
No, thank God.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tanner. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment.
Quick comment?
If I might. The last time we did this, I was on the council. The big holdup was the Fire Department because they wanted us to put in a fire hybrid so we could put out a fire if the pool caught on fire.
Like, like you're right.
Yeah, I want, I have an inspection coming up at Ranson Everglade School. We just finished that, and now there's a zoning inspection required. And I go, "Sir, the pool's been there for 18 years, it hasn't moved. There's no zoning issues, we have to do zoning." I go, "Well, the pool hasn't moved in 18 years, well, what's the reason?" There is no reason, we just have to come and, okay, fine. You don't argue with them. You just say, "Okay," and we'll be there for the inspection and whatever.
Reason is there's a box on the form.
That is correct. They will say, "Oh, you never needed an inspection for zoning." Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you.
Good luck with your...
Thank you. That's another story.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to move that we award the RFP to ZTI for the construction of the new structure at the Aquatic Center.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed? Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilman Melz is still not available via teleconference, but if it's the pleasure of the council, we can move forward with the presentation by the consultant and also open public hearing in the meantime, if it's okay with the council.
Are you okay with proceeding with the presentation?
Yes.
Sanitation.
Okay, in ordinance of the Village Council of Miami Shores, Village Florida, providing for the levy and collection of non-adverbal assessments for solid waste collection and disposal services, providing for an increase in the levy and collection of non-adverbal assessments, providing for the continuation of the assessments from year to year, providing for certification of the solid waste collection non-adverbal assessment using the uniform tax book collection method, providing for amendments to Chapter 9, Garbage and Trash, Article 3, Section 9-42, Schedule of the Village Code of Ordinances, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Staff on this item is the village manager. Mr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am. As everyone knows, and I'm sure there's a lot of people here in the room tonight because of this issue, nobody likes to raise rates, nobody likes to pay money, nobody likes to reach in their pocket and pay something to their local government. I get that, I understand that, and we have worked very hard to try and figure out how we can avoid this. We have avoided this increase and kicked the can down the road now for 11 years. We haven't had an increase in our garbage and trash bill in 11 years. There is, we're at the point now where we're living off our reserves. And imagine your household account, if you were in a position where you're going to your savings account every year, or, excuse me, every month to pay your bills. That's where we're at now. We're at a point where we have to do something, we have to raise the rates. We have looked at all sorts of different scenarios. I've heard, "Well, look, why don't you just pick up garbage once a week?" You know, there's, you don't need twice-a-week pickup. When you look at our community and you look at how much garbage is generated, we basically have four routes out there, and each route picks up about 10 tons of garbage. If we were going to once-a-week collection, that would be 20 tons a week for each route. So, we would have to, and let's assume that the people were, didn't put out as much. They realized, "Okay, we're going to watch how we buy things in different packages, we'll recycle more," whatever the case may be. Let's just say by some miracle, we went from 20 tons down to 15 tons. There's no way that one truck, two guys on the back, are going to pick up 15 tons of garbage by hand on any given day. The other problem is, where we dump the truck, we have to dump at the county's recycle... It's a, called a resource recovery facility. Essentially, it's a large incinerator. It's way out in Doral. It's on northwest 58th Street and 97th Avenue. Getting out there and back, and our guys have to go every day and do that, there's no way in a 10-hour day with that much garbage picked up, you're going to go up and back in one day like that. So, in order to do something, implement a program like that, you'd have to have a shuttle truck, another driver with an empty truck going back and forth, and there goes your cost savings because then you need another piece of equipment that's going to have to stay on the road. So, you can't get rid of the second truck that you just took off on the other routes. So, from a garbage standpoint, there just isn't enough of economy of scale to justify, to get to where we don't have to raise your rates. In the garbage side, it can't be done. So, the other big thing, and the biggest thing that we deal with every day, is bulk trash. And you're going to hear our consultant tell you that we give a very high level of service, which we do. Those of you that have lived in our community for a long time know that about, it's been about 10 years ago now, we used to grind our own, all the yard trash at our public works yard out there at 17th Avenue and 103rd Street. Unfortunately, Dade County Derm came in and shut us down. They wouldn't, they treated that as a transfer of trash, which is illegal, we can't do that. They sick derm on us, we had to drill wells, we had to do remediation, and it was just tree limbs. So, we had to do all of that stuff, and we had to go back with transporting the amount of trash that this community generates to a landfill. We found another company, Waste Management, that would take our yard trash, and they would actually grind it up and reuse it, and therefore, it was considered recycling. And so, the county let us exit their waste stream and go into Waste Management's waste stream. And we saved you all and the taxpayers a bunch of money for a lot of years by doing that. Unfortunately, Waste Management's costs have gone up, and they have creeped up to the point that they are close to the county's dump fee per year, or per ton. So, all of our costs continue to go up every year. And the only way to hold this rate down is to stop picking up as much yard trash. My point in the grinding that we used to do was that we would pick up one, say, one week's worth of trash. We would take it out to Public Works, and we would, the same guys would grind the trash. And what would happen is, the trash would pile up in the alleys. We had trash out there to the point where, in some cases, the garbage truck couldn't get through the alley because the yard trash sat in the alley so long and built up so high, we couldn't get the garbage trucks through. Not a good situation. When the trash piles up out there, the rat situation just starts multiplying. And whether we like it or not, the rats are running up and down the wires at night. You see them certain times of the year. There's rodents all over Dade County, it's not just a Miami Shores problem, it's everywhere. When the trash backs up in the alley, the phones here are ringing off the hook with people complaining about rodents and rats and their children and so on and so forth. So, we're in a situation where if we want to lower the garbage rate or keep it the way it is, we have to cut the trash pickup significantly to the point that it would be every four to five weeks instead of, in the wintertime, sometimes it's once a week because the stuff obviously doesn't grow as fast out there. So, we're able to get through the community much faster because there's much less yard trash out there. The other thing that, and what that would entail is, we would lay off a loader crew, a trash grabber crew, and two truck drivers. So, we wouldn't have to replace that equipment in the future, we wouldn't have to pay the salaries of those people, and we wouldn't be taking as much stuff to the dump, material to the dump, so you wouldn't have as much in terms of dump fees. But you would have a mess in your city. This city would not look the way it is now. We would not be able to. When I get a call, I guarantee you tomorrow, or we're going to get a call, "We're going to have a Fourth of July party tomorrow. The truck went by two days ago, can you please, please, please help me and come back and pick this stuff up? My yard man just came and he did my yard, and there's a big pile of trash out in front, and I don't want it here for my guests." Our Public Works Department accommodates everybody or tries to. We will go out, we'll pick that stuff up. You cut something, and you've got an alley in the back, and you put it in the front, it's usually less money for you as a homeowner to have the tree trimmer put it right out in front where he cut the tree, rather than go into the back alley and carry it in the back alley. We come and we'll make a special pickup for you at no charge out front. We pick up as much trash as you want. One of those great big trucks is 22, 25 yards? 25-yard truck, which is more than you can generate or that most people would generate. But we have people that every week, we pick up 25 cubic yards' worth of trash on their property because they're so into maintaining their yards and keeping their vegetation clean, or their yards clean and their vegetation picked up. So, we have looked at all these things. We have tried to keep the numbers down. The equipment that we use is very expensive. A garbage truck now is $250,000 for one truck. It's big money, and periodically, they have to be replaced. They're a very high-maintenance item. They stop and start every 100 feet. So, between the transmissions, the rear ends, the brakes, the steering, and then, of course, we're on the road going back and forth to the dump every day, dumping them as well. So, we're in the trucking business. And finally, the other thing about yard trash and the crew that we have, when a hurricane hits, these are the guys that are out there first. The wind is still blowing, and these guys are out there clearing the streets, picking up the trash, getting our city back to normal. And as fast as we do that, we still have people that complain bitterly that it takes us too long and where, you know, what's going on, and how come there's still trash in my neighborhood? And I want this stuff picked up. We're talking about laying off 50% of our trash operation in order to save you about $2.04 a week is what it would amount to. And to have this trash piled up in your alleys and in your neighborhood and strewn about throughout our community. And again, as I said, not to mention the hurricane, and again, I realize it doesn't happen all the time, but when it happens, trust me, we need these guys. They're here, they're on the job, and they're out there right away taking care of things. So, and one other point that I want to make, in the slide presentation, you're going to see various cities that have various rates of, that they charge for sanitation services, garbage, trash, and recycling. You're going to see that we're up towards the top. And I don't want you to be taken aback by that. Every city does things differently. Ours is a true enterprise fund. There are no property tax dollars that go into the collection of your garbage and trash and recycling. Everything is taken care of in your garbage bill. Other cities supplement their garbage bills through their property tax bill. So, you may have a, some people may be paying $450 in garbage, but then, when you figure out how much of their property taxes are going in there, they're paying $900 or $1,000 a year. they're paying $900 or $1,000 a year. The city of South Miami, for example, is one that doesn't have any garbage bill at all. So when you call them and ask them, oh, garbage is free. We don't, we don't charge our residents. Folks, there's no such thing as free and everybody in this room knows that. Someone's paying the bill. And when I talk to their city manager, if they were to have a bill, their rate today would be more than the rate that we're proposing. And it's the same thing in South Miami. I've, I've talked to several cities and, and all of them are, are facing the same difficulties we're facing. And, and the other thing that I, that I didn't really touch on is recycling. The costs for recycling are going through the roof right now. You've all seen things in the newspaper and media of late. Our recycling costs now are $85 a ton for us to take recycling to the various, to, to our recycling plant. And there, because of what's called the China Sword, meaning they're, they're, China's not accepting certain commodities anymore of recycling, the stuff is being landfilled. So we're going to have to look at a new program here, particularly in glass collection. And we're actually, last week, I was working directly with a glass factory in Sarasota to see if somehow we can logistically get our glass into, to Sarasota instead of the landfills here at a cheaper rate or at least the same rate. Again, it's a logistics nightmare because the numbers just aren't working. And it's not just working for the village, it's, everybody's in the same boat. The county, the other cities. So again, all of our costs have gone up. We have looked at all kinds of different scenarios to try and hold your rates down. And this is where we're at. So with that said.
Mr. Benton, thank you. And can we welcome Councilman Melz to the meeting?
Yeah, Tom, you don't mind repeating that for Councilman Melz?
Yeah, right.
Councilman Melz, can you hear me? Welcome to the meeting, Councilman Melz. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Mr. Benton has just finished summarizing his part and we are now going to, to the presenter from Public Resources Management Group. Sir, would you go ahead and introduce yourself and, and talk about the study?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. My name is Nick Smith. I was the primary consultant with Public Resources Management Group that helped conduct the study. As of July 1st, we were actually part of another rate firm called Raphtalus. And what I wanted to do today was just talk about the study itself, the goals of the study, run you through some of the assumptions, and then discuss our findings. And really, Mr. Benton did a fantastic job laying out the issues and what I'll be discussing will supplement all of that. So again, we're gonna go through the purpose of the study, why we're here tonight. We're gonna discuss where we're starting the study before we do any projections. We're gonna talk about our projections of the revenues, all of the capital expenditures, operating expenses, and then talk about the proposed rate adjustments. So ours purpose here was to develop a 10-year rate plan, starting with the 2019 budget and project all the way out to fiscal year 2020. As was mentioned, a big component of the solid waste system is the capital, the trucks, all of the various equipment needed to actually collect the garbage. So we wanted to make sure rates were developed, that we're able to have these replacements and maintenance on the vehicles. And then, of course, at the end of the study, after we look at the capital and the expenses and revenues, we take a look at the need for any potential rate adjustments. As Mr. Benton mentioned, the rates haven't been adjusted since fiscal year 2008. And in fiscal year 2011, the rates were switched from being on a monthly utility bill basis to being on the non-advalorm assessment. In that transition, the rates were not adjusted. So it's been 11 and 12 years, if we're looking at 2020, since rates have been adjusted. Now, the, starting with the current situation of the system, you see there's about $2.6 million in revenue, $2.5 million operating expenses, and a transfer to the general fund for administrative expenses. Expenses that basically, if the solid waste enterprise was not receiving these services from the general fund, such as finance, they would have to pay for themselves. After all of these expenses, even before capital, the enterprise fund is budgeting a deficiency of about a quarter million dollars. And then when you layer on the capital, Mr. Benton mentioned that a truck is about $250,000 a year. That increases the deficiency. And throughout our forecasts, I'll discuss that the cost of capital increases year over year. So that deficiency would only grow without rate adjustments. In terms of cash balances, the financial statements would show $2 million in cash. However, for purposes of capital and rate phasing, there's actually only a million dollars that's able to be used. There's a bit of a lag between when the assessment revenues are collected and then the start of the fiscal year. So essentially, there's a three-month period where the enterprise fund does not have revenue coming in, but they still need to pay the bills. So that's about, you know, three months, anywhere between $800,000 to $1 million a year to be able to pay these bills until the revenues come in. So again, for our rate-making purposes, we were only allowed to use $1 million to help buy the rates down. In terms of revenues, the village is serving approximately 3,600 customers. Most of it's single-family condos, apartments, and a small portion of it is commercial. The service area for the village is relatively built out, so we didn't project any growth moving forward. And the rate revenues from the non-advalorm assessment have been fairly consistent year over year, about $2.6 million. So we carry that moving forward. There are some other revenues, mainly just interest income from the cash in the bank. However, as I mentioned, in our plan, we're using a little bit of cash to help buy that down, so the interest income would also decline. Operating expenses, year over year, it includes, again, that general fund transfer of $350,000 per year. We did not adjust that moving forward. It's held relatively flat year over year. And as Mr. Benton mentioned, this includes increased disposal and recycling costs. He mentioned a processing fee of about $85. And that's actually a relatively good rate compared to what other places are seeing. We've seen it go upwards of $120. And there are processors that are wanting to renegotiate contracts because the costs are going up so much. And then, of course, year over year, you mentioned the Resource Recovery Facility in Miami-Dade County. Those facilities are very expensive. They require a lot of maintenance. They typically have their own contractual fees that go up year over year. So if they have to increase their disposal fees, that gets passed along to you. And then, year over year, over the 10-year forecast, the total operating expenses are projected to move about 3.4% increase every year. This is just a few of the escalation factors that we use. As I mentioned, we started with the fiscal year 2019 budget and projected out 10 years. So for example, general inflation of 2.4% per year. That's from the Congressional Budget Office. They do projections about twice a year. And they've relatively been about 2.4%, 2.5% year over year. And I also want to mention that these are, in some cases, more allowances for increase. For example, health insurance. That may not necessarily move or increase 5% per year, but it may be 0.1 year and then 10% the following year. So we want to make sure we had a level-handed approach to make sure the money was there to be able to pay for those increases. And this is just a graphical representation of the 3.4% increase year over year that I mentioned, increasing from $2.8 million to $3.8 million by the end of the forecast. And about 40% of that cost is personnel. 26 and a quarter is a disposal cost, which is not in the village's control. We have the 16% of repair and maintenance on the vehicles, which would only increase if the vehicles were to age and not be replaced or repaired. And then 12% is that general fund administrative transfer. As I previously mentioned, the capital improvement plan is a critical piece of the solid waste operations. You need the trucks to be able to collect all of the bulky waste and the garbage throughout the week. The starting cost for, let's say, a garbage truck is about $250,000. And year over year, based on what the village has been seeing, costs will be increasing, or projected to increase, 8% per year. We worked very hard with the village staff to take a look at different scenarios on the capital funding to evaluate the need for certain vehicles, the timing for certain vehicles. And we made some adjustments. And really, the village is being proactive in their capital replacement because nobody wants to have an emergency vehicle replacement and not be able to pick up the garbage. And of course, emergency replacements are more expensive in the long run than when you're able to plan for it. And of course, the village has no debt, so this tire plan is just cash funded. Now, year over year, it averages about $360,000 with that 8% inflation. There are a couple of years with, for example, 2022 and 2023, where multiple vehicles have to be bought because of that vehicle replacement schedule. So it may look a little lumpy, but it's all based on the schedule that staff was able to put together and help phase in some of those purchases. As I mentioned, the statements may show $2 million of cash, but for rate-making purposes, we really only have $1 million to use for cash flow, capital and phasing and rates. We assumed that 90-day target in a reserve to make sure the bills can be paid while the assessment of revenue comes in. And throughout the forecast, our proposed, proposed adjustments are able to meet those cash targets. Now below, or on the screen are the proposed rate adjustments for the 10-year period and a graphical representation. So the bars are all of the expenditures, operating expenses, the capital. And the dashed line would be the existing rate revenues. So if we did no rate increases year over year, what would that look like? And you can see that the deficiency only grows year over year. And then the solid black line at the top are with our proposed rate adjustments. Now, fiscal year 2020 and 2021, we are proposing 15% adjustments per year. Put that into context a little bit. The rates haven't been adjusted since 2008. If we assumed 2.5% inflation, we bring that to 2020, that's about 30% just from the start. So right now, because of the current budgeted deficiency and that since the rates haven't been adjusted since 2008, we're playing a bit of catch-up right up in the front. Ideally, if you take a look at 2022 through 2028, we typically like to propose lower, steady increases that are able to be planned for by the resident. But in the case of the system now, the 15 adjustments are necessary to be able to provide the same level of service and just operate the system as it is. And with the cash deficiencies and the increasing costs, there is not too much room to actually play with the 15%. Otherwise, the fund will run out of money in just a couple of years. The current table is just a summary of the existing rate schedule for residential. We, for the 15% rate adjustments year, for the first two years, those are across-the-board increases. So everyone gets the same 15% increase. We didn't increase residential more than commercial or multifamily more than residential. So everybody gets the same increase. And the following table is a highlight of the existing and proposed commercial rates. Now, as Mr. Benton mentioned, this is a comparison of the solid waste rates in the area. And by no means is it a report card of the system because as Mr. Benton mentioned, there are a lot of different reasons why that may be different. One thing is, these are the existing rates. So for any systems that are currently planning rate adjustments, that's not currently reflected. It's also not reflected, when was the last time these rates were adjusted? What's their current level of service? A lot of these comparable cities and entities, they work with a solid waste contractor such as Waste Management or Republic, and they provide the service. Those rates are typically under contract, maybe for a seven-year period. And it's been my recent experience that a lot of those contracts are coming up and they're gonna have to go out for bid again. And from what we've seen, the collection rates have increased significantly for these new contract renewals because of all of the increased costs. And even the collection haulers such as Waste Management are feeling those increased recycling costs as well. And so this is an industry-wide issue, really. As Mr. Benton mentioned, the level of service that's provided to the citizens in the village is incredible. We were actually taken on a ride-along throughout the city to see some of the pickup areas. And seeing the area, hearing that essentially the staff is on a haul to be able to pick up the waste whenever, is a little unheard of for me. Typically, especially with these haulers, you have to put out the waste, the specified time, the specified place, usually not in back alleys, but right in front on the curb. If it's, if you miss the collection, they're not gonna come back out and pick it up. If you're supposed to only have two cans and you put out three, they're only gonna pick the two. And there's a lot of different restrictions on, for example, the green waste, the yard waste, where it has to be cut up in certain specifications, bundled or binned. And if, again, if it doesn't meet their specifications, they won't pick it up, they'll just leave it. And another thing to highlight what Mr. Benton said was, when I was doing the ride-along, I was able to see some of the properties. And as you mentioned, you know, the lawns are well-manicured and looked beautiful. So I can tell that the level of service provided was because the village takes great pride in their community. So the aesthetics of the community for being able to have the waste picked up at the rate that it is, is critical. And this is just a summary of everything that I just talked about. Why are these facilities different? And why are rates different? So in conclusion, the existing rates that the village has for solid waste collection are not projected to be sufficient throughout the forecast period. And so we are proposing a 15% increase for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 with 3% increases thereafter, more akin to inflation or cost of living. And with these increases, we believe it meets the assessment rules. There's a benefit provided to the community in terms of aesthetics, public health and safety. And that the proportionality, because we're doing the across-the-board adjustments, that the relationship and the benefit provided to each property is equal. And of course, this is a 10-year projection and things do change. There are international policies such as the China Green Sword that is out of our control. And projections can change based on things like that. So we recommend that year over year, the village review these projections and review the rate plan and adjust if necessary, whether it be increase or decrease. Thank you very much.
Council, any questions?
Madam, Vice Mayor, you weren't here two weeks ago when I basically butted heads with your associate. I won't do that again, Mr. Brady and Mr. Melz.
I watched you.
So you know what I did.
I watched you.
I don't want to do that again. Just a couple of points. This plan provides nothing to encourage the village residents to reduce the waste stream, does it?
No, it is the current level of service.
Right. And the other thing I wanted to mention, just to briefly, because you know how I stand on this. The, we just approved something where we're borrowing money over a period of time because we don't have the resources to pay for it all at once, but it levels out the amount. Those two big bump years of 2023 and 2024, where you predict we'll have to buy capital purchases of large amounts, we're paying cash for that capital equipment. That could be leveled out. It would, may, may cost longer, more in the long run, but it could be leveled out by borrowing the money to buy those trucks, correct?
Correct. If you did a lease program, it would stretch the payments out. Correct. If you did a lease program, it would stretch the payments out. And as you mentioned, over time, you would continue leasing the vehicles. So if there were a need for a backup vehicle, you wouldn't be able to have an older vehicle on hand to provide that service.
Right, but it could, you could level it out. There's, I've been around for a long time. We've done this before with police cars and things like that. But anyway, thank you very much.
Mr. Brady, any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. We really appreciate it. And I actually don't have any questions because I have not only read the study, but I heard the last presentation the last time, so thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Might be good time for public comment?
I would say, so, we would like to welcome you to the podium to state your name and address. And you have three minutes in this public comment time. And we'll encourage you not to be repetitive, so that if you have something to say that we'll add to the discussion, we would appreciate it. We can't answer questions from here, but we can listen to what your comments are on the rate increase. This is your opportunity, because we're going to have the first reading of an ordinance, and we would like public comment for that.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Leslie Fraser. I live at 10666 Northeast 11 Court. I think it's such an important issue. It's changing all the time. Global politics change all the time. So we are impacted by it. What, thank you for the presentation. It was very insightful, because these are things that we don't think about. It's influencing the cost of keeping a community to look beautiful. But I have a sense of, if we just, it feels a lot like we're stuck and set. We're not doing anything different, looking at new avenues, like Councilman LaFredo said. Are we encouraging the citizens to reduce? We hear a lot about recycling, but now we're learning that recycling is more expensive. I read something online, some communities are now using glass crushers and selling the, it's like sand, selling that back to whoever needs that for industry. I would like to propose that we look at some other things that we can do. Of course, even, you know, as a citizen, you do expect things to be more expensive. I think that there will be pushback from citizens when that goes up. That happens all the time. But it would be nice if there were some more brainstorming around the issue to say, we're looking at this, we encourage that, and here are some educational plans. Maybe even couple it with things at schools and have some sort of a contest. You know, because it is not just important to keep costs down. It's important to have a clean environment to live with, live in, and to do the right thing. And to make a lot of garbage is not the right thing. We think about it in our house all the time when we go to the store now. I'm not buying that because it's not recyclable. We do bring our bags, and everybody's trying to do things. But I think coming from the leadership, it would be powerful if we could do that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Please.
Hi, my name is Francis Guadajarde. I live on 101 Street, 5-0 Northwest 101 Street. It is amazing how much trash that I see every day. It's, once, it's like, as soon as the garbage truck picks up the bulk, bulk of trash, next thing you know, it's another pile. It's, I think that we should encourage the residents or teach them how to, I don't know, it's, it's just, it's overwhelming, the amount of trash that we do put out. I mean, that I see out. And I think we should do something, something about it. And I don't see, if that could affect the, I know, okay, the more trash we have, the more money that we are going to have to spend, okay? But I don't see the, why we should have that much trash out, out in a week. It's just amazing. It's incredible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Public comment is not allowed. Thank you. Council, your comments.
Vice Mayor? No, I agree with the public that, you know, there are things that we need to look at that would, you know, eventually change the way that we generate and collect waste. I think we need to keep in mind that it would definitely be a many, many, multi-year effort to affect a level of change that would affect the requirements of the, you know, the village today. So, I just, you know, I just wanted to mention that, you know, we definitely should look at that. And that, but I think we need to understand that it will take many years to effectuate, you know, a change that would be, it would impact the amount of work that we have to do on this end. So we should probably start soon. But thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can't support the measure for a variety of reasons, but I don't want to belabor the point. I would be willing to go for a lesser increase, coupled with an active investigation into ways to reduce the waste stream. I've already had this discussion with the village manager. He actually came up with a plan a number of years ago to go to zero waste. But as he pointed out to me last week or the week before, Durham would no longer approve it. And that's one of the problems that we have. Miami-Dade County pumps millions of gallons of raw sewage into the Atlantic Ocean every day. Yet, if we tried to do something for zero waste to the landfill, they would shut us down. So, but anyway, I'm going, so this is something of a protest vote, but I'm going to make the vote anyway.
Mr. Davis, would you mind coming to the podium and telling about some of the experiences you've had in reaching out to sanitation people? And inform us a little bit of how, Mr. Benton mentioned in his comments that he had reached out to Sarasota about glass recycling. But I know that you've done a lot more than that. You've tested the waters in all manner and types of sanitation. So could you tell us a few of the issues that have come up recently? Maybe it would help the public.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. One of the things that, that we, let's start with what we do in Miami Shores. And Mr. Benton laid it out very, very well and in much detail. But just to reiterate, people are cutting a lot of stuff. The trees have grown immensely. I've been here just coming up on 31 years. And I can see that the trees that we planted when I first got here are mature, very large trees. And if you look in people's backyards, the trees are enormous. We, as the village, we cut, we trim trees. We have to eliminate the waste that we develop just from our own tree trimming on the swales and in the right-ofways. But people are trimming not only on the east side, but on the west side also. If you look, you see that the trees are enormous. That is the major cost that we have in the village, which is bulk waste. Garbage is one thing. We try, you can, you can have plans to reduce it by buying more recyclable items. But the bulk waste is what's costing this village the most, through pickup and through disposal.
Mr. Davis, we're going to, apparently Councilman Melz has only a limited amount of time. So we would like to go ahead and.
That's fine with me.
Move, yes, thank you. But people are free to ask you questions about this, okay? So I would like to go ahead and take a motion on the ordinance that accompanies the sanitation rate study and as it exists in the agenda.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I would like to move that we approve this ordinance on first reading.
Okay, and do we have a, do we have a second? I'll second it. So, do we want to have any further discussion? Councilman Melz, did you want to weigh in here a little bit? Or do you want me to go ahead and call the question?
Vice Mayor, the only thing I want to say is that nobody has reached out to me and asked me to vote against this. Nobody has reached out to me and asked us to reduce our level of service. I think we have an extraordinary level of service. And until we, as residents, commit to reductions, as Councilman Brady has said, I see no other choice than to support this wholeheartedly. And I will be voting yes.
Okay. So, in the interest of time, can I go ahead and call the question? I believe we've, we've heard a lot, we've studied a lot, and we understand a lot. So, all in favor of approving the ordinance on first reading? Signify by saying aye.
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 And all opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And happy travels, Councilman Melz.
All right.
So I have some further things to say that I, I really feel, since I wasn't here last time, I would like to express. First of all, in terms of dollars, it is, and I admit, a big increase for the first two years. It is hard to swallow. It's over, and it's going to come on your trim notice fairly rapidly if this is approved. So you are going to open that up and think, wow, that is a lot of money that we have gone up. But I would like to give you a little bit of an anecdotal reference. For this $936 that is going to be charged to, as a residential rate, $960, excuse me, $933.06 will be your bill in 2021. And I would like to point out that in 2008, which is the last year that most any city did any increases. Because after that, we were all in the recession, trying to control, and we were cutting. Public Works did cut a tree trimming unit, and we only just restored it recently. But there were other ways that Public Works really cut down through the recession. So there's no way that we would have approached, I don't think, successfully, an increase during that period of time. And then, we went ahead and made the change of going on to the trim notice, which, you, as a matter of fact, if you pay your taxes in November, you get a 4% discount on that amount of money, as you know, because it applies to the entire trim notice. So, we had that, and we continued to enjoy a recycling market that was favorable. To go from $35 a ton for recycling to $85 is an extraordinary increase. And yet, the planning that we did helped to cushion us from that. So, if we had gone up that 3% a year, we would be at $936 today. We didn't. But let me explain to you about another way of procuring your sanitation services. And that's through a private hauler. And some of the names are mentioned. Waste Management is one. In my business, I contract with a private hauler. I'm in a place where no one picks up our garbage, and I have a small business. So I contract with a private hauler who says, who, when I went to pay the bill this month versus last month, it had gone up 3% in one month. So I thought, well, gee, that's interesting. I wonder how they're justifying that increase. Because most private haulers are at liberty to increase your fees without asking you. And so you either take that or you don't. The explanation was, for decades, we've been a trusted recycling and waste service provider. We strive to build sustainable, healthy communities for the neighborhoods we serve. But recycling has reached a crisis point. The recycling processing charge that you're paying, which is that 3% increase, is necessary due to the overwhelming amount of contaminated recyclables that are threatening local recycling programs. And let me just say that as, and I'm hearing from a lot of you, that we care about our waste stream. As Miami Shores residents, what I'm hearing at Councilman Melz's Plastics Workshop, as well as from the broader community of all of us who are environmentally aware, we need to manage our waste stream. That means we need to really consider before we do something that we're going to throw out or recycle. And Ms. Fraser mentioned it, that that's what our conscience tells us to do. But that doesn't necessarily help us with what we have. We have a small business of our own, the Miami Shores Small Business of Sanitation. And it's an enterprise fund, which means we have to run it like a business. We need to collect as much money as we need to pay for the service. And that's incumbent upon any municipality, not just Miami Shores. But we're stuck with a point, sorry, I can't talk from your seat. We're stuck at a point now where we would like to manage that fund in a responsible way. And so we, as elected officials, have to take that responsibility. It's incumbent upon us. But that doesn't mean that we're not saying as private citizens, and as well as to the rest of our citizens, we're looking for ways to recycle and be responsible with our waste stream. We're looking to try to cut down on waste, and we will continue to do that. And if we're successful, then we all will feel that incumbent upon us to take that out of the rates and not continue to increase if we don't need to. So I think that you can trust your government that we would do that, just as you've trusted us since 2008, not to increase your rates and to stick with 7.9 mils, which we have done for a number of years. So thanks for listening to that long ramble, and I appreciate it.
And anyone else have a comment?
Announcements. The annual July 4th holiday celebration, including fireworks, will be held on Thursday, July 4th at 9:00 p.m. on the driving range of the country club. The Village Aquatic Center will be open at 10:00 a.m. with special barbecue menu and extend their hours to stay open for the fireworks. Village offices will be closed in honor of the holiday. The Village Council Budget Workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, July 9th. Beginning at 6:00 p.m., the workshop will be held at Village Hall. The next meeting of the Village Council will be held at Village Hall on Tuesday, July 16, 2019, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Would you rather receive a newsletter via email? Residents can sign up to receive the monthly newsletter by email. Simply use the Contact Us link on the front page of our website. Be sure your email includes your name and mailing address. The communications manager will take care of the rest. And please remember to visit the Village website for more information on Village events, departments, and to receive agenda notifications. Village Council comments.
Just one point. This is just a serendipity, but on Saturday afternoon, I had this young son who was trying to get rid of a pickup truck load full of garbage. And he went to the facility out at 160th and Northwest First. And they wouldn't take him because he had a Jacksonville driver's license. And they certainly wouldn't take Miami Shores driver's license, so they said, go to the landfill. So he went to the North Dade landfill, and I have been to the mountaintop. Because we went up to the top of the mountain, and we must have been 200 feet in the air and got through the mud and dumped our load. But when I was walking on the stuff in the dry areas, I had a little bit of déjà vu. But basically, what they're using up there is mulch-chewed-up yard waste as the landfill dirt. So a lot of things that you don't know about are going into the landfill, just like what's going into the Atlantic Ocean. And we, as a society, and I commend the council for their vote tonight and their courage, but we, as a society, have to start taking a cold look at that. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we're going to have a very nice Fourth of July party at the country club on Thursday, and I'd welcome and recommend everybody to attend.
Thank you, Councilman. No, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and wish you all a very happy Fourth of July. And hopefully, we'll see you over at the country club for some fireworks. Thanks.
Thanks to everyone for coming. I appreciate the presenters tonight. And I want to reiterate that we really honor and appreciate Billy Carpenter, as a teacher of 20 years at Miami Shores Elementary. I'm thrilled with the way. I'm thrilled with the way we were able to honor her. And looking forward, I know that we have this wonderful Fourth of July event, and through the summer, I wish each and every one of you a wonderful summer and an ability to enjoy the heat in the best way possible. So thank you. And with that, I'll call the meeting adjourned.